Here in the back with Mr. Murphy, and then we'll come forward. And then when he gets back up to the front, so you can read the agenda. Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, priorities from minutes from May 24th, 2022. Had a chance to read them over. Are there any corrections or additions? And if not, is there a motion? Yes. So who? Oh, motion been made to approve the minutes.
Second.
Last means motion been seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say hi.
Hi.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the Rain program, and Nate Conroy is here and is going to take the podium and discuss this program with us.
Thank you. Counsel, thanks for having me here. Nathan Conroy, I'm with Rain. I'm your partner in serving folks here in Brownsville who are looking to start and grow their business. I'm here just to present a very brief three-month quarter report for the activities that we've been doing. As a reminder, I serve both Lynn and Benton Counties rural communities, and so this report will encapsulate all of them. However, this report in digital form has been shared with Scott, and he can share it with you, and it includes at the end a more detailed view, you know, specific to Brownsville activities. So really quick, this is our report for quarter two. Just there at the front, a few images of things that we've been up to. Go ahead, next page. The summary here is that in quarter two, we've had a successful quarter serving across the two counties, rural communities, about 58 different entrepreneurs and service providers. These are people that we've identified who can help entrepreneurs grow. We've been engaged with 10 community partners, collaborating with them to put on programs and serve those entrepreneurs. And together, we've put on about 44 events that we've hosted and also that we've participated in, helped support, again, with the whole goal of trying to help people who are wanting to start and grow businesses in our area. Next page. Tonight was going to be the grand finale to finally introduce you to our new entrepreneur community from Monroe, and she called me tonight saying that she didn't want to be here and get everybody sick. So unfortunately, we get to delay meeting Raina in person. She is a real person. She's in Monroe, she's a small business owner. We're really excited to have her. I come from an education background and a technology background, so to have a partner who is both located, you know, closer down in this area and who is a brick and mortar entrepreneur is really wonderful to serve our local entrepreneurs. She has a background in retail, very interested to work and put on programming to help other people who are selling goods. Think about it, in the summer at fairs and different things like that. She also has a background in grit. This is her painting her historic building in downtown Monroe, trying to get it open. So I think there's a lot of entrepreneurs in our area that have similar circumstances and that she can be really helpful to. Next. I just want to highlight a few of our activities, some things that we've focused on. In the upper left here is we've worked really hard to amplify stories of entrepreneurship. We know that a lot of times in rural communities, you know, like people know each other, and it's helpful to hear the background stories that others have taken to start their businesses. We've also worked really hard to provide tangible benefits when we put on programs. So as an example, this photo in the upper right is from County Line Flowers. They're just south of Harrisburg. We had an event where we brought in a professional photographer to help people create really high-quality images of the products that they sell as a way to help them, you know, continue to do that. The Brownsville is a part of the Rural Economic Alliance, or REAL. That's a partnership that we continue to work with, and we finalized a video. Harrisburg needed a little bit more work on their video, so we finished that this quarter. And then lastly, as I said before, we've been working really hard to facilitate entrepreneurs assisting other entrepreneurs. And so that picture in the lower left is an event held where we invited entrepreneurs in who are selling goods and encouraged them to essentially give feedback to each other about how they can be better at selling their goods in a point-of-sale type environment. How's their display? How's their description of their products? Again, trying to help each other be successful and create a community. Next. A big thing I want to highlight is we just finished up an accelerator program focused on digital marketing. We set records with the number of entrepreneurs that we had apply, the number that went through, really wonderful testimonials, a big contingent from Lynn County, Southern Lynn County here that we're really excited about. The lower right is a little celebration we just had last week to celebrate some of those local entrepreneurs who went through that digital marketing program. Next. And so what's next is that we're really proud of, this is even in the past year, we've designed follow-on programs. So once we get entrepreneurs who are moving through, we try to keep that momentum going. And so after this Rainmaker program, everything, apologies, everything in our organization has to be rain-related. So then there's Rain Drops, which is hours of direct support from local professionals that are paid for. So people can just book an hour with a CPA or with a social media person. These are available for the community, so we're encouraging people to do that. Next up, starting in July, is a program focused specifically on financial literacy called Money Maker. So this is a follow-on accelerator. These are all hybrid. We've tried to be really accessible to people so they can join, you know, either in person or they can join, you know, on their computer. Next. Apologies for going quickly too, but I know you can follow up on this if you have questions. And then two other ones that I just wanted to highlight. We have a crowdfunding platform that is up and running. Oregon businesses are getting funded through an equity-based crowdfunding. So instead of just promising somebody your product early on or something like that, people actually get to contribute funds and get a very small equity stake. So this is an exciting opportunity for businesses that are looking to raise between $50,000 and $250,000. And so one ask I have of the council and of the community is just to help us identify businesses who might be in that category of looking to do fundraising. And then the last thing I'll highlight here is just that we've been working really hard to get media attention to our entrepreneurs. Some of, most of them, almost all of them, have amazing stories of grit and insight and vision, and so we want to make sure that those stories are getting covered. So I think I've got two more slides here, just highlighting a few of those. So one case study, just to give you some concrete examples, this is Voyas Racing and Fabrication up in Sweet Home. They actually reached out to us about, the wife hasn't had a pet sitting business. We reached out, and Rain's model is to go meet them where they are and ask questions and figure out what do they really need. Turns out that they're running this metal, this fabrication business that is growing like crazy. They're outgrowing their space, and so they're looking to expand, and so Rain is working hard to help them connect with funding and space to grow their business. Next. And then this one, what I'm really proud of, this was a chocolate maker in Philomath, Moku Chocolate. Found out about her from the Philomath Community Facebook page where people were saying, hey, here's some gift ideas for the holidays. And I followed up with her. Turns out that she's a one-woman show making this award-winning chocolate, and I connected her with Business Oregon, and she just got a $20,000 grant to expand her operation there in Philomath and hire people and sell her chocolate. So this is just the type of, the type of work that I'm trying to do of being present in the community and being on those chats and things and identifying these people that are doing stuff. And when I talked to Maureen, she said, I, her quote there, she said, you know, I just had no idea that Business Oregon existed, or that I was doing something special, or that I would even be a candidate for this type of funding. So probably just awareness building. My very last slide, I promise, just my last case study here, this is a woman, Lisa, in Monroe, who is making these really fabulous fragrances. She uses, she uses natural plants to create these fragrances, selling in a bunch of stores, and it never gotten publicity for it. So this is just an example of how we work with her, got her a local story that she's thrilled about because it gives her that kind of credibility that she can put up on her website, put in publications, and it resulted in some immediate sales as well. So again, very, I want to stop there. I'm a teacher by trade, so I could talk for as long as needed to get through a class period, but I'll stop there and just say thanks again for this partnership. I welcome any questions. And again, Scott, if you wouldn't mind forwarding on this presentation so that the council can have a detail.
Anybody have questions?
Just out of curiosity, the promotional video that you did, in which Brownsville was one of the small towns featured.
Yes.
How, if, and how have you been able to utilize that? And is that available on the Rain website? I looked, and I didn't think I saw it, but maybe I just wasn't looking at the right place.
Good question.
Yeah, and I just, for anybody in the counselor audience that may not be familiar with that.
Yeah, we shot a, we worked with a professional film studio out of Kerneus that shot a bunch of footage in Brownsville, highlighted a number of businesses here, as well as the mayor's book.
Yeah, he's the mayor.
Yep. And it's a wonderful video. It is available, so I could get it. It is on our website, it's also on our YouTube, and I think.
I showed it to them already. I showed it to much council, the Brownsville version. It'd be nice for them to see all of the scenes though. I didn't have the whole thing.
Okay, I'd be happy to share the link to all those videos, and we would like to know, we, I think we've tried to post them on kind of the community, you know, forum-type pages that we've seen to try to get viewership, but we're, we'd like to do more of that as well because we think that they're, they're really wonderful.
Yeah, I just thought it was a good example of how you're promoting.
Yeah, yeah.
What about Brownsville contacts? Have there been many businesses here either started or wanting to start that?
There's some, I was really thankful to the chamber that had me present also in this quarter, and so that was a wonderful connection. And there are a number of, I'd say, it come to mind about three other entrepreneurs that I'm currently actively working with. Some, some interesting, specific issues that were brought up, you know, related that they think that there's a broader interest in. So, so yeah, there is, there is interest in that.
I think learning about specifics is always memorable.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you very much for coming tonight. Really exciting program. I'm glad you're involved.
Yeah, I love being, I love being part of Brownsville.
You'll be here every three months?
At a minimum, at a minimum. So hopefully you'll see me around town as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is the budget hearing. We need to open the.
Sergeant Franby's.
Oh.
Jump him if you would. Are you in a hurry?
No, definitely.
Come on up. You're gonna blow it, Steve, you're in a hurry. Anytime anybody asks you that, you say, yeah.
Scott says I'm in a hurry. I had another speaker lined up, but he, I lost him last minute. A new resident deputy, I'll try to get him again next month. He's, he's working. So last month, I'll get into something kind of cool, 22 traffic stops, 15 citations. If you look at the narrative, that, it ranged from everything, mostly speed, cell phones, stop signs, no insurance, registration issues, and we actually wrote an uncommon, uncommon one for speed racing. So kind of different. If you've read through this, I haven't seen this, this year, there were no crimes reported in the month of May. No crimes at all, which is, I thought, super, super awesome. So in last month's report, we did a ton of traffic in, in April. We had a lot of traffic numbers, and I think you kind of see the effects of that, you know, going into the next month. I don't like to use the Q word of quiet, but last month was pretty quiet. It was, it's just awesome to see a small town where we have, we didn't have any vehicle break-ins, we didn't have any assaults, we didn't have any sheds broken into, nobody woke up to see, you know, shovels missing, anything like that. So that was, that was pretty awesome.
That's it, my shovel's missing. All the way.
So yeah, pretty, pretty quiet month. Now we're jumping into, you know, the heat. That was Pioneer Picnic, where everybody's on deck planning for 4th of July now for all the cities doing stuff, so yeah, before you know it, we'll be back into the rainy season, but we're gonna start, it's gonna be busy, busy, busy. Oh, another thing I had written down to note, last month brought Lieutenant Looney from Animal Control. We had a lot of animal calls last month when weather started to get a little bit better, and one citation was issued for parking. So yeah, please, if you have issues, please call because if we're not driving around, we don't see it, we don't know about it. So, yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm a pet owner, and this is about, three weeks ago, I had an issue with some other pet owners at the park, and of course they weren't, dogs weren't controlled and that sort of thing. And I actually did call, non-emergency 911, because I wasn't aware the park managers had just started. That said, and if you are just your normal, average citizen, try and enjoy your dog in the park. I mean, I was so impressed, there was an office, I said, if anybody's in the area, and within less than 15 minutes, somebody was there. And I know you, it wasn't a burglary, and it wasn't the speeding, and I know the really important things that you officers do every day, but it is so affirming to have you show up and get out of your car and talk to people who knowingly have, you know, not been good citizens in the park. So I just want to say, the, the power of that is enormous, and knowing that the sheriff's office will do that for us is a lot.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback. That's something we have been pushing really hard for because a lot of the agencies, with the way law enforcement staffing is, to relieve some of that, you know, Lynn County, Marion County, they have phone trees and stuff, so they try to push you off to like, hey, go online, fill out this form, or call this number, and then you're dispatched to somebody else. So we don't have phone trees in Lynn County. If you call, somebody will answer. No reporting online. You'll either talk to me or another deputy in person, or by phone if we're far away. So I like hearing stories like that. I like to say that's every time, but there's times where we can't get there that fast. Yeah.
Any more questions or comments for the officer? Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yep.
Oh, yes. Got a whole lot, just making sure.
Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing for our budget, which has been announced, and you should know our intention, you should know about it. If anybody'd like to comment concerning our budget, please take the podiums, take your name and address, and you have three minutes to discuss your, make your point. So anyone wish to speak to the budget? Hearing none, we'll move on to the cybersecurity review.
Okay. I moved too fast. I was gonna do a little review, but that's fine. You're moving, I'm moving. Security, cybersecurity review. So twice a year, the city county insurance is requiring cities to bring the cyber issue to council, and of course, there's always a lot to report. One of the reasons why is because they've changed their coverage dramatically at CIS to where now they're only going to cover cities at a basic level of $50,000 per instance. And then if you want $250,000 or $500,000 or $1 million, you're gonna have to go through several certification processes. That's, in my view, starting to be a little over the top in terms of the risks. But the problem that you have is, you know, we started cybersecurity, we've decided that everything needs to be online, even our toasters and our refrigerators and everything else, with systems that were simply not secure. I think eventually what will happen is the states will probably work with Homeland Security or another federal agency to strengthen this because cybercrime, as we all know, is on the rise. It is atrocious. So this is a little bit, a note from CIS showing how the general liability went up and the property and auto physical damage, both went up significantly over this last rate period. And then you can see the note here on the cyber coverage. I got a few slides, this is from 2021 numbers. We saw a huge uptick in cybercrime during the pandemic layoff. I guess if people were gonna be home, they might as well live a life of crime. So they did that to the tune of $265 billion. So it's a very serious matter, not in, not just in terms of the money that they take, but that havoc they wreak. I know you've all read of, I think the San Francisco transit system a few years ago got hit, Atlanta's transit system got hit, hospitals have been hit. No one is safe in terms of internet protection. So, you know, what does it look like? These are some questions that were answered, asked by Business Insider, this was a little poll that they had done. Both folks said, hey, we think that the thing that's gonna be impacted the most during a cyber issue is our reputation. You know, I mean, once we're breached, what do you do? And then that's what, that's where the insurance comes in, trying to get that stuff back. I will say that we have had two ransomware attacks since I've been here, and fortunately, I was able to reverse both of them, lucky mostly, and we weren't hit by a sophisticated outfit, fortunately. But they happened for a variety of reasons. Right now, somebody's hijacked the mayor's, as one example, they've, they've hijacked his email account, and so staff will get an email every once in a while, it looks like it's from Don, but it isn't. So, you know, our best and first line of defense, of course, is all the end-users that are on the city system, making sure that we have trustworthy sites, right? That we're receiving emails from trustworthy sources. So here are how organizations feel that they are ready, right? This is kind of, you know, saying that, hey, we're, we're prepared, you know, we've got a, we've got a level of preparedness we feel good about. Out of that 81%, I would say that that 25% are actually prepared for something that really happened to their system before it to go down. Of course, the FBI tells folks, you know, do not pay, you know, do not pay, because there's no guarantee if you pay that you'll get your data, and then you also make yourself a target, right? So that is the cybersecurity thing. I will say, before I get to public works real quick, I will say that we had a third-party vendor recently that I had to scold a little bit on the phone, a very reputable vendor. We've had a very good relationship with them forever. They were recently bought out, and we get this random email from somebody that we don't know with an attachment saying that your bill is due. I'm like, what decade are you living in? What rock did you crawl out from under? So I called the president of that company and gave them the what for, and they asked, well, what could we have done? I don't know. Give us a phone call, you, since we know who you are, instead of, and let us know that we're gonna receive an email with, you know, a letter, a phone call, something, except, you know, just a random email that you get. So just so council is aware, when I get random emails like that, they, they do not get opened, they get trashed. So fortunately, that policy's worked out well, and we'll continue to go down that path. But it's, you know, something that's ever moving very fast and ever-changing, and I'm sure that we will continue to do that. So anyway, so that's my spiel on cybersecurity for this time.
We don't need to take any further discussion or action. Okay. We'll move on to the public works. Carl?
I lost, I lost there.
Got you.
Now, the water treatment plant on Saturday, we switched from the wells to the infiltration gallery. We weren't keeping up with the water, so I had to switch over. River was finally clean enough to do so. Yeah, so a large oak tree fell, most of you probably saw it on the old water treatment plant over here. Unfortunately, it fell on the day of the kiddy parade and everything, so we elected to just secure it and leave it alone until after the Pioneer Picnic was over. And then we had to wait for a tree faller to cut it up for us. So anyway, so that's finally all done. What had happened is the, the power service, the tree fell on the power service, caught the electrical service on fire, almost got the tree on fire. Anyway, we ended up having to have the fire department, everybody come out. They literally turned the power meter into a puddle of plastic on the ground, it got pretty hot. One of the transformers on the power pole popped, almost ripped a transformer off the pole across the street by Holloway Heights. So anyway, we got that all under control, had to have the power company, everybody come out. It was quite the ordeal, quite the most inconvenient time it could possibly happen, but that's normally when things happen.
Just to interject real quick, I, a lot of the, number of the vendors down there when I was walking around around that time were really impressed with how quick everybody responded to that, and they really appreciated it, just so you know.
We have a couple of water leaks flowing right now, but we're waiting on a tractor truck to show up, so one of them's right up here in the parking lot. Initially, I thought that this was just seepage from the hillside over here, but I think that, I think we're passed out, so I'm pretty sure it's a water leak. Anyway, Thursday, we're gonna dig that up, and we have another leak over on Wilson that we're gonna repair on Thursday as well. So we finished out our discharge, as you know, we had to extend our, we had to get permission from DEQ to extend our, our discharge season. I finished up with the north treatment plant on May 27th, and I finished up on the south plant on June 3rd. Everything went really well, no problems. So we discharged an additional 8.1 million from the north plant and 18.3 million from the south plant. At Pioneer Park, most of our time was spent doing things around the park or around town to, in preparation for Pioneer Picnic. That included like taking care of the flower beds, putting bark mulch around the trees, getting all the grass grown, trimmed, and everything, looking as nice as we can for the parade and everything. So that was, that the majority of our time was, was spent this last several weeks. And the park-to-park caretakers have been doing a pretty spectacular job down in the park. A lot, a lot of pride down there. There's a lot of damage done in the park from Pioneer Picnic just because it was wet. Luckily, it's coming back pretty quick, so hopefully that'll all be healed in here in the next week or so. About half of it's already gone, so I don't suspect it's gonna be a problem. And they even went through the trouble of getting a roller out, rolled the whole thing, get the ruts out, and so it's, they're, they're just doing a fabulous job down there. One of the things we're having a little bit of trouble with down in the park is weed spraying. There seems to be a very sensitive thing down in the park. What people have to realize, we only have so many working hours, and how do we want to spend our working hours down in the park? With the amount of stuff that needs to be weed-ed down in the park, we can either pay somebody 30 hours a week to weed eat, or we can do 30 hours a week of what we're doing now. So weed spraying is not really an option unless you want the rest of the park to be neglected so that the weeds, so that weed trimming can be done. So I just hope that people understand that there's a reason why we do that. Again, because Pioneer Park's a large space, and we have two people taking care of it, and public works is maxed out, so if we have to go down and help them weed eat and stuff, it's stuff that we're not, and then, then the town gets neglected. So it's, it's a no-win situation. We have people that run all the way across the park to tell us not to spray. We're not spraying anywhere near them, but they run all the, they'll come charging all the way across the park to tell us that they don't like it. It's like, well, I mean, you were a couple hundred yards away at the time, and you managed to go out of your way to do it. So I just, I just hope people understand why we're spraying in the park. I mean, we spray all over town, it's just one of the maintenance tasks that we do. And you do it with a little backpack sprayer, it's, we do an initial spray in the springtime, but, and we just do spot spraying after that. So I just, I've got several complaints about it, and so that's why I want to make an honorable mention for that.
Go ahead and tag on to the ODA certifications and.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So anyway, so you have to have, you have to be certified for pesticides. I happen to be certified for pesticides, and one other employee is certified for pesticides. So to run mechanical machinery or anything like that, you have to have, you have to have a, a public pesticide applicator's license, which I have, and the other employee that does the spraying has the license as well. Nobody else can operate that equipment, they can only operate hand equipment. It's just a way, I know, it, sometimes it sucks because it takes a lot longer, but get your license, that's my philosophy with that. Anyway, that, I just wanted to explain that because I do, I get a lot of complaints about spraying in the park, and they're, they've been doing quite a bit down there because these real OCD about little weeds and stuff like that. And I think it's great, I just wish people would be a little more understanding as to our reasoning for it. Like I say, it's 26 acres of mowing and weed eating for basically two people, plus take care of restrooms, plus emptying trash, plus take care of people, plus, plus, plus. So where do you want your time spent? That's what you have to have, that's really what you have to ask yourself in terms of that, and spraying cuts down on that, that task substantially. So anyway, like I say, I just want to make an honorable mention because I do get multiple complaints. I try to explain this to people, and usually they're in a fit of rage at that point, and they don't want to listen to anything that I have to say, so anyway, I've said it. We spent quite a bit of time up at the cemetery getting it ready for Memorial Day weekend. We hauled seven dump trucks to cut grass off, that's about eight yards per truck. Fortunately, we have two mowers, two baggers, so vast majority of it's done with bagging. But nonetheless, it takes about four days to get the cemetery basically looking like a golf course for two days, because it all grows right back. I mean, it's, it's crazy how fast things are going right now. I just thought I'd give a real brief update on River's Edge. For those that haven't been out there, basically, basically Phase Two is built out, which was an additional 16 lots to the original Phase One, which was 48 houses. It's all built out, almost every house is done. So it's pretty interesting to drive through there, I mean, brand-new neighborhood, it's kind of interesting. Phase Three is moving along incredibly slow. I think the builders were hoping that Phase Three would be done by now, but that's not even close to happening. We've encountered a couple of problems out there, we did some GPS measuring, and some of the sewer grades might be wrong, which means a lot of pipe might have to get dug up. We're hoping that's not the case. DEQ's, DEQ and AW, they all set the standards of what the flows of pipes have to be, and if you don't meet, if you're not within that range, then basically we have to make a tear back up. They do that in the specifications, they didn't verify it with surveyors or us, for that matter. So we're gonna have to do quite a bit of water testing and TVing and mandrels and stuff like that to see if it's gonna meet the specification. It's not looking like it's going to. The reason I say they have to dig quite a bit up, so the part that's no good is kind of in the middle. There's, there's like two sections and each section would be a manhole. And then this section is wrong. Well, when you change the grade, so you have to lift this end up or lower this end. Well, you can't lower this end, so you have to lift this end. So now everything upstream of that no longer works right. So now you've got to take everything else up upstream and raise it to make it match the, so that everything flows correctly. So what happens is if the pipes are laid too flat, the liquid separates from the solids and it doesn't wash out of the pipe. What happens if you grade it too much is the water separates too fast from the solids and you leave solids in the pipe. So there's a, there's kind of a sweet zone of the grades that you want to lay the pipe at so that it's washing solids and things out of the pipes at all times. So that, that's the optimal way to lay the sewer. That's the expectation that we have when they lay the sewer, when it's brand-new. And so we won't accept anything less than that because otherwise it's just going to be a problem down the road. It causes odor problems, it causes backups, it causes all sorts of things. And the city doesn't need to inherit problems, they need to inherit properly installed utilities, which is why I'm out there doing the inspecting. And the engineering firm as well, I'm not the only inspector on the site, so there's two of us that are doing that. So anyway, I felt like it was important to kind of make an honorable mention of that. Like I say, the contractors, I don't, they must be working two or three jobs, they're only out here one day a week working on this thing. So it's really hard to even go out and do inspect. But in a way, it makes it easier because I can go out there by myself and go around and do the checks I need to do without them covering over my shoulder or shadowing me around, asking me all sorts of questions. And so.
And that is not work that your career has.
No, that, they're obligated, they have to, they have to meet our specifications before the city will accept it.
Which is a good time to mention it because tonight council will be considering public work standards, which is a tiny, anybody's.
So anyway, just thought I'd give an honorable mention. I have not mentioned Rivers Edge for quite a while, I know most people probably don't care because it's a new subdivision, but anyway, it's a worthwhile mention.
I'd like to ask about the park area. There's supposed to be a walkway down toward the river, not toward the river, but toward the river.
Yeah.
Is that something that's going to happen soon?
It's in, it's in the works, so what happens is that.
There's a really crummy start to it.
Yeah, and we won't accept it. It has to be built to a standard.
Okay. Make sure it's a standard.
They might just be roughing it in, I don't know what they're doing. So how it works is that the city have, they have a performance bond on it that guarantees this, that guarantees the city that it will be done. That if they don't do it, the performance bond is paid to the city and the city pays to have it out of that performance bond, it doesn't come out of taxpayer money.
Right.
That pays to have that done. And it costs them an incredible amount of money to have that performance bond on that park. So it's in their best interest to finish it and get it done versus paying the city because then we just do whatever we want. You know, I, I mean, that's kind of being loose about that, but we pretty much do whatever we want.
I think it's also important to note on that, as I mentioned at the last council, the, that park is not a city park, that is, that is only by the.
Yeah, it will be a private park.
It's going to be a private park. The other thing I think Bear's mentioning is, we have purposefully not accepted the sanitary sewer nor the water lines out on the new subdivision yet because they're not complete. So once they are complete and pass Carl and our engineering firm's standards as laid forth in the public work standards and by DEQ and OJ, then we will bring that to council via resolution and officially accept them at some point in the future.
When that park is finished, you say it's private park?
Yes.
So when that park is finished, can people that don't live in that area walk over there and?
You could, you're not encouraged to. They could, they could actually, actually, actually ask you to leave, but.
Okay.
The city owns the streets.
And that is.
And the sidewalk, well, not the sidewalks, the property owners own that. That would be, you're able to walk there. And people are going to use the park. I'm just saying that I want council to remember that we're not responsible for that discharge or for that.
Right, right.
Yeah, but it, it's in the agreement that they, they construct the park as, as part of the planning commission's deals in allowing that subdivision. So that was a requirement, that they construct the open space or the, the park area in the back and the trail. So, yeah, so their, their feet is clearly being held to the fire on that. They're just dragging their feet. So, but then, and that's their choice because it's just costing them money. So anyway, I don't, I didn't really have anything else to report on, so just questions and I'm allocated.
Thank you.
Any more questions of Carl? If not, we'll move on.
Thank you.
To our administration.
All right.
Thank you, Carl.
So Carl and I have been getting ready for, of course, the Fourth of July, coming up on the Fourth of July. That's funny you're not there. Thanks for laughing. And we've got, events returning is really the purpose of the slide, excited about that. We're going to see standby meeting day return on July twenty-third. Linda McCormick was here at the last meeting talking about particulars about that particular event. And then we've got Rally on the River returning here soon on July twelfth through the seventeenth. That's the vintage trailer rally there in the heart. It's exciting. Where are we at with court? Well, the court has made its official transition. The last court date here was in May, as council knows. I just wanted to go over a few pieces of this that we are still working on. The city will always have a contract with the judge to do municipal court, right? So our judge continues to be Jessica Meyer. Right now, we've retained the services of Robert Schneider, he's been the city prosecutor for two decades or so. Five, come on, man. I can't concentrate with you talking. Lynn County Sheriff's Office contract becomes part of the Lynn County Justice Court, right? So if you enter into an agreement, which council did, to move the municipal court to justice court, it comes along with the sheriff's office contract, so that's something that will continue. We'll also have potentially tech user fees, the interface, might have some interface issues with Shapps Consulting, Shapps provides magic, that's being transitioned, as it has been transitioned over and out of Lynn County Justice Court, but we're still working through some of those details. Collections Processing, which is Western Collections, fortunately for us, they also had a contractual relationship with Lynn County Justice Court, so that was pretty seamless in that way that worked. And then PayGov, our automatic payment system, has a link on it that will send people to the justice court because they have a different paying system. Now, with that said, it's going to be months, maybe even up to a year or longer, where people will pay an old fine on a case that's closed or whatever that'll come here and we'll, we're going to be, in some situations, we'll have to collect fees and then remit them to the county. So anyway, that's where we're at. Got a beautiful card from Carol Humphries, our retiring court clerk. That's, that's just cool to read if anybody's interested, it's here. We were able, thanks to Dawn and Brett coming in to watch, of course, to take her to lunch and do some things, which was really nice and really appreciated. We're going to, we're going to greatly miss Carol, she was a fantastic addition to our staff. Moving on, Lynx Update. So Mayor Ware and Councilor Thompson, thank you very much for your help on this, getting this out and about. I know Stacey's been busy on this issue too. The first day of service was last week. Lynx is the bus service or the public transportation system, that's in Lebanon. They have decided to provide two days of coverage in Brownsville, Tuesdays and Fridays. You can find all that information on the city's website, I've got it there, I've got it on the Lynx website as well. Mayor Ware has been running pamphlets and brochures around town, doing his due diligence.
I've ridden it twice and it's really fun. My wife and I both went. First time, we just went to the senior center there and enjoyed that. We have a library, we can book my books. And then second trip, we stopped at the brewery, it has a lot of the trailer food, really great place to go. So you can go there, you have an hour before the bus comes back, enjoy yourself. Or you can stay longer and spend three hours and enjoy yourself.
Just don't miss the bus back.
It's really fun, just don't miss the bus back.
So there's two locations, thank you for that. There were two locations, of course, they're picking folks up at the American Legion Senior Center at three thirty-nine North Main and the Assembly of God Church at three thirteen Washmont. We've also asked our nonprofit groups and our faith community to help us get the word out and market that. So we're staying right on that.
I had one more thing. They, they will come and get people at their home if they are handicapped or if they have problems getting to the pickup sites. So they will go to someone's home if they're in the city limits of Brownsville, not to take them on back to Lebanon. Medical, you know, costs of gas, except more traffic.
Fantastic, thank you, Dawn. Moving into DEPREP, disaster preparedness, this is the agree, the things that we've been working on with the city of Sweet Home Lebanon, along with the corresponding fire districts. We had a meeting on June seventh, I believe, to take a look at that contract. All the cities agreed after looking at it that we would, we did want to move forward. We talked about how we were going to do that and basically what the outcome of that discussion was, it looks like October is going to be a more prime time for us to start. The city of Sweet Home is point on that, they're working on the contract right now, so we're hoping to get that all ratified by the cities over the next few months. Mayor Ware and I were authorized to sign that agreement at the last council meeting, so we're just waiting for that to finish. Where are we at, next steps on the budget tonight, of course, council will more than likely pass resolution, whatever it was, sixteen, twenty, twenty-two sixteen, which will put the budget into play. What does that mean? Well, we have to put the budget into microphone, which is our general ledger program. I'll get the website updated with all that information and we'll prepare the documents for the clerk's office and the assessor's office. And we're going to be doing this on a tightrope because we've got to get that in, we've got to close out the current fiscal year and we need to get all that information over to our auditor who's going to audit us on the first of August. So that's how that's going. Moving on, some of the other things that we've got going, I thought that we were going to get our annual notice from Williams, which is the gas company, you'll get this probably at the July meeting apparently. I just wanted to talk about Rivers Edge, which Carl did, so I hope we labor that on the end to remind everyone, there's a homeowners association out there. I have gotten some questions about the taxes and why are the taxes so high? I don't know if they're concerned about the taxes and the homeowners association or whatnot, but anyway, there is a homeowners association associated with that as well. We're in the weeds and nuisances, soiree if you will, trying to get some of that stuff done has been challenging with the wet weather until just a week ago and my partner in crime right now is out of sorts. So we will be finalizing that, hopefully before, you know, no mowing is allowed and we enter into fire season. And we have a few nuisances, which for most, for the most part, folks have been very good about that. Couple of notable, notable mentions here, I just, just as I came back to work today to get the council room open tonight, received Tim Tice's report, Carl and I will be going through that soon. So next council meeting, you'll be seeing that Water Management Conservation Plan, WMCP, ready to go for the next council meeting, some considerations there, perhaps a resolution. And then Pacific Power did reach out, David Reese, our city attorney who's working on that piece, reached out to Pacific Power and they're still in the reviewing process. So that's still pending. And that's my report for tonight, that's as fast as I can.
Thank you. Any questions of Scott? If not, Liz, did you have a report tonight? Okay. We saw your written report, looks interesting. Okay, next on the list is the library report, which is in your packet. Any questions on that or the court report or any comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to citizens' comments. If the mic is open, you take the podium, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes to discuss whatever issue you would like to raise with us. So anyone who wishes to speak to us, you're welcome to take the podium.
Lindley Bischoff, one oh seven Kosha. And this question is actually directed towards Carl. There's some graffiti that's been on the benches at the park. As a member of the parks board, I'm offering my services if you provide me with the paint.
Absolutely.
All right?
Absolutely.
There you go.
That was quick and easy. Anybody else wish to?
I do, I'm sorry.
So bring it to you.
Whenever you're ready.
I have it in the shop right now, I can get it to you tonight.
And I'll get it to you tomorrow. Anyone else wish to speak? Welcome to do so. Since no one is taking it.
I, I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I will. First of all, I.
We need a name.
Oh, Yolanda Towser, one ninety-two Kirk Avenue, Brownsville. And first, I'd like to preface my remarks by respectfully requesting not to be referred to as Mrs. in council minutes. I don't call myself Mrs. I don't introduce myself as Mrs. and I don't sign any papers or documents as Mrs. So reference to my marital status is completely unnecessary and thank you for respecting my request. It's been a couple of months since I've attended a council meeting, however, I've been following the recent newspaper coverage, both the Times and the Albany Democrat Herald regarding council business and affairs, as well as reading council minutes posted on the city's website. Needless to say, both newspapers' coverage and council minutes have been, have made for some interesting reading lately. However, my concern tonight is in regards to certain statements made by Counselor Craven during last month's council meeting, May twenty-fourth, when expressing his concern for the Times editor Vance Parrish's May eleventh, twenty twenty-two editorial. In Counselor Craven's opinion, Parrish's May eleventh editorial, quote, distorted, unquote, and, quote, disinformed, unquote, quote, the citizens of Brownsville. Counselor Craven goes on to accuse Parrish of relying on hearsay, quote, quote, hearsay, and, quote, rushing to rumors when writing his editorial. As a result, Counselor Craven felt Parrish needed a little talking to, so to speak, via the formation of an ad hoc committee composed of council members, including himself. In his remarks to council on May twenty-fourth, Craven went on to say that his concerns were, quote, crystallized after Parrish's editorial and believed it was, quote, based purely on rumor, speculation, and gossip, which was cultivated by a few members of our community, all of whom were absent from the last two council meetings, which were free of attacks directed and aimed at certain counselors and staff. Council was able to conduct the city's business uninterrupted for the good of the order, unquote. Because Counselor Craven's statements do not provide any specific evidence of such, I would like to request examples of community members' attacks, so-called attacks, on, quote, certain council and staff, keeping in mind that a question, a comment, or opinion to which Counselor Craven, or any counselor for that matter, does not agree, does not constitute an attack. Also, in what way was the city's business interrupted during the time certain community members were in attendance? As a seventeen-year resident of Brownsville, I am concerned and offended by Counselor Craven's divisive insinuations and hyperbolic calling out of certain members of this community as gossip rumor, rumor-mongering malcontents, out to attack council and staff and interfere with the carrying out of city business. I'm equally appalled that our local editor was malign in a similar fashion as to undermine his integrity, honesty, credibility, and professionalism, as was, I might add, a former council member here on this council, no longer on this council. Such unnecessary finger-pointing rhetoric by a member of this council does not kill an already fractured community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I'd like to give this to go on record.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak? No one's taking the podium, so we'll move on. To resolution number twenty twenty-two point fourteen, the water rates annual adjustments on page forty-four. Are there any questions and what is your, we've discussed it pretty thoroughly already, as you know, so we need a.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty-two fourteen.
Okay, is there, motion's been made to approve the resolution? Is there a?
Okay. For the five percent rate, seven percent. Did we do a seven percent rate increase?
Well, there's two in the agenda, so yeah, we need to make sure that, seven percent is the one you're making a motion for?
Yes.
Very good. I would second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two fourteen, which is a seven percent rate increase. Discussion from the council. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is resolution number twenty twenty-two fifteen, the sewer rate annual adjustments. Your pleasure.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty-two fifteen for the seven percent.
Second. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two fifteen. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor from May.[1720.12] So, just as a matter, I know there's some folks here who wasn't here through the whole process. So the budget started, that's what I was going to do earlier, to set some of this up. I'll do it quickly now. The Budget Committee started on April 28th. Council had a work session to get ready for the Budget Committee. They took a lot of deliberation on that. The Budget Committee has six members from the general public, and then the tall seven members of council are also on that committee. The Budget Committee ended up recommending a 7% increase to the city council. And there was a 5% and a 7% resolution in the agenda package that we're considering. One of the things that's difficult with inflation going through the roof is this has been an issue for the city for a long time. We've tried to keep up with a 3% cost of living adjustment kind of a thing to the rates, but as things continue to rise, we've got to stay relevant. Because what we don't want, what council has always never wanted to have happen over the last at least 15 and a half years since I've been here, is to run the ship ashore, meaning that you have to do a 20 or 30% increase when you do the next water treatment plan. So within the next few years, three to five, two to four, you're going to see the city doing a major water treatment plant upgrade, and we're hoping to avoid a major upgrade. The reason why the public run these systems is because there's no way to do depreciated assets on 18 miles of water and sewer pipe. It's an absolutely absurd business proposition, and that's why nobody is a private water purveyor. So anyway, that's a little bit of background on that.
Questions, Scott? You probably won't talk this over till you're tired of it. Okay, next issue, Resolution Number 2022.16, adopting the fiscal year 2022-23 budget and making appropriations.
I just have something. Yeah, I just have something I just want to say on the budget. We, the library has an additional $10,000 added to it in the budget this year. Doesn't mean it's going to be for next year. It's going to be an additional $10,000, I don't think. But anyways, I disagree with it because it is for library ebooks, and this will be a cost the citizens will incur every year, and it will only increase. And I believe we need to watch every penny. And most people are getting their ebooks online on their, you know, laptop, on their, whatever they use, their phones and tablets and. Also, if this goes through, I'd like to have, know what the readership is. We'd like to consider that and look at it next year, so it's.
As the utilization of the ebook program.
Yes, and so it isn't going to be just automatically approved every year. And also, I'd like us to consider, the software is also going to have to change. I don't know if everybody's aware of that. And these people that are using Folic now, and they're going to have to learn a new software program, which for a lot of volunteers and, you know, a lot of people, it's not the easiest thing to do. And I believe they're looking at Bibliotonic?
Biblionics.
Biblionics. And everybody will have to be retrained. And so I just, I just wanted to bring that up. I know it seems to be, a lot of people seem to think it's great, at least some of the people I've talked to. Not everybody, because they're saying, well, I read books, you know, from Amazon Prime. I'm a Prime member, I did that. I read books from all different places, so, yeah, I'm not sure it's going to be.
So you're not making a proposal?
Well, I would like to change that. I would like to eliminate that $10,000 from the start, but I don't think that's going to be popular. But yes, okay, let me do it. I'll make the proposal.
If I could make a comment, I think you and I have talked about, there was a frustration last, what, fall? When the library was not open during school, we school, during school break.
Yes.
And the die had been cast, but we said, okay, well, next year, let's revisit that, but we need to do it ahead of time. Isn't something we can decide at the last minute that we may want to look at? It just occurs to me that maybe council's spending some time, or a couple of people on council, committee on council, taking a look at the library, just that, do we have questions? Do we have, you know, is there some feedback or input that we could give that we think might enhance? Because it is a community library, and so we, you know, taxpayers paying for that, this, that, and the other thing. So maybe just take a couple of hours as a committee, a few of us, and talking about the library, which I don't think has ever happened, that I recall.
Well, that's because you have a standing committee of the library advisory board. You have a library advisory board that advises the council on these things. So you are more than welcome, anybody is, to go, they meet on the 10th of the month.
That's a good point. Yeah.
And so that's where this originated from. So the request came from the library advisory board. It was placed in the budget, because of course I'm the budget officer. And when a legally authorized board in the city, which the library advisory board is that, places a request in the budget, it's irresponsible we need to prevent that. So that's why it was in there. I know it was some lively discussion one night of the Budget Committee regarding that. I think that there have been some good questions that I've heard from others, certainly other councillors too, other than councillor Chambers. And I think councillor Thompson, you're making some good points. But I would encourage council to reach out to the library advisory board meeting and just attend.
And I would say, point very well taken. You know, sometimes you get too close to the, anyway. So yes, great ideas and good luck. I'm followed.
I would say in addition to the ebooks, which is a relatively small portion of where this $10,000 goes, in my conversations with Sherry, a big part of this program are the audiobooks. A lot of people in this area are 30 to 40, 45 minutes to work, back and forth every day. Our library is their source for audiobooks. And so that's where the growth is going to be in that program. So I would support it.
I didn't hear anything about any audiobooks. This is.
Okay, more discussion? It's all, it's electronic books.
Okay.
So where are we?
Well, I'm walking my statement back because.
Okay.
Well, I'm eating humble pie.
All right. And that's very often, guys.
So we have a resolution for us for an 8.644, well, $8,607,000 budget. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would vote that we accept the budget as proposed from the Budget Committee.
Is there a second to that motion? Second. Okay, the motion been made and seconded to approve the Resolution Number 2022.16, adopting the budget for the next fiscal year. Any more discussion?
Are we going to revisit this at the next Budget Committee, the library?
That's, if you choose, it's not a issue for this.
Yeah, I think every aspect of the budget will be.
That is what I initially had started out wanting to know.
Yeah.
Okay. And more questions?
So here's what I'm getting councillor Chambers. What I'm hearing, that's not being said, it's being implied, is that we're going to review that program annually. Is that what I'm hearing? That's what councillor Chambers is asking for.
Right, yeah, that's what I, yeah, I'm asking.
Do we do that with every program we're here?
Yeah, everything on the budget is just, everything on the budget is not in question. The question is about.
Exactly, it is about the library.
You brought up a point or so. So it's over again? Okay, very good, I got it. I'll make a note so that I remember next year's meeting specifically back.
Okay, more discussion? Motion been made to approve resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So there's two, a, and four, and all vote yes, so there's five. Four, so the motion carries. We'll move on to Resolution, to the, oh yeah, Resolution Number 2022.17, which is the year-end transfer of money from one program to another to balance out the, this year. Any questions? Or is there any motion?
I would vote that we pass Resolution 2022.17 for the year-end transfers.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve Resolution Number 2022.17. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to ordinance number 7, 8, 9, and the motion that we need is one to read by title only.
I'll make a motion that we read ordinance number 7, 8, 9 by title only.
Second.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So I will read it by title only. Ordinance number 7, 8, 9, an ordinance repealing chapter 3.25 of the Brownsville Municipal Code relating to the city of Brownsville's local transit room tax. Now, discussion.
Can I make a motion?
Okay.
We voted on that. I just want to make sure, be sure I wouldn't.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would, I would like to adopt by emergency that we adopt the repeal so that it happens between now and July 1st, so that that takes care of itself for the next fiscal year.
Motion's been made to accept ordinance number 7, 8, 9 by emergency measures so it can be implemented immediately for the repeal of the transit room tax. Discussion.
I would just say, as we revisit this in the future, while we won't really be revisiting it.
You never know.
True, yeah, true, true. Just, let's keep in mind the Chamber of Commerce when we're allocating funds in the future, because this was a source of revenue for that. So just to bring that to the forefront of our pitch, I'm going to contemplate that.
Okay, more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to action items. Approve the delinquent assessments, which is page 58, and there's only one name on this. We need a motion to implement the delinquent assessment. Discussion or motion? Keep looking, one or two people usually make motions. I make a motion that we approve the delinquent assessments. Is there a second? Motion been made and seconded to approve the delinquent account. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so real quick, so annually, the city council is required by state law to pass any delinquent assessments that puts on the tax lien as part of the budget. So they have to pass a motion to do so. That's what council just did.
Right, okay. Okay, now we need to authorize the 2022 general election advertisements. At this, the positions that would be announced in the paper to be published on July 27th, August 3rd, and August 10th, that the four positions, one for mayor and three for the council positions, which includes, that is listed here.
It is.
I might not see this, oh, it's on there. Be councillor Hanson's position, councillor Nadeau, councillor Thompson. The positions will be open. And this is the authorization to publish that information, public input, and how to apply it, what wants to apply it. So, motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the advertisement for the November 2022 general election.
I second.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded to approve this announcement to be placed in the paper concerning the mayor and city council position will be opened during the next election. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adopt public work standards, I think this one we need to discuss.
Just briefly.
Briefly.
Yeah, you know, just briefly. You guys are doing great. So public work standards were originally adopted in 2014. Carl and I worked diligently on that to get that done with city engineers at the time. And it was time, once again, to visit those, you know, every five or six years, they should be reviewed to make sure, as Carl said earlier in his report, that everything is staying in line with industry standards and that we're up to speed on those things. And so to that end, about a year and a half ago, the city hired Dire Partnership Cities Engineer to go through those. We did go through those. Elizabeth Coleman, our city planner, Carl Frank, myself, went over those feverishly. I was, as I mentioned at the Think of March Council meeting, was very impressed with Steph's thoroughness as to put through those. So Ryan, Quigley, our city engineers delivered those tonight. Jesse McElwain is also very instrumental in putting those together for us. They were online for council. They will be, if they're adopted tonight, they will be immediately put into the Brownsville Municipal Code as an appendage so that Mrs. Coleman can start letting folks who are developing know what the new standards are. So there were a few changes, and I, council, if you have any questions, you have all of us here to ask.
Any questions, Josh? Or we could entertain a motion. That we adopt the public work standards.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to adopt the public work standards, that presented online. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Central Lynn Rec Center renovation project, this one we do need to discuss.
All right, so.
Not a simple issue.
Okay, so, in council, in the city administrator report, or I don't think it was that I said, wrote a report, Carl and I pinned a report regarding our recommendations for this, where we gave a brief outline of the timeframe of how we've been working on this for a very long time. Back in 2007, 2008, we learned that our gym floor at the rec center had about 10 years useful life, was going to run out in about 2017, 2018, clearly it's 2022. We've went past that. Basically, what happened over time is the floor was sanded too much, and now nails, there's just no need to go into it. The rec center board spent a lot of time looking at flooring options with myself. We took field trips to several areas, places like the Albany YMCA, Sweet Home, and looked at a bunch of different flooring options. Long story long, really, we, in 2016, Carl and I came to council and presented a, some documents about where the appraisal was for the rec center, what the useful life was for the rec center, where we were at with the park building, and the needs that we had, and said, hey, this is coming. Council's like, yeah, you're right. So in 2017, we formed the Facilities Review Committee. The Facilities Review Committee was comprised of many different folks from the community, from the Chamber of Commerce, to the park board, to the rec center, to the picnic association, to the school, to Halsey. We had a well-rounded committee put together. We had some good, robust discussions. The outcome of those discussions precipitated, before we formed that committee, we hired Inspections Unlimited to come do, come do a complete review of both of those facilities, a very thorough review. Committee reviewed those recommendations and then determined that we really need a structural engineer to come take a look at the rec center particularly, to see if we had good enough bones to make sure we could move forward with the renovation. So they did that. They made that recommendation to council. Council said, okay. They formed another committee, an ad hoc committee, to continue looking at that. Then we ran upon the pandemic, and everybody retreated to their homes for a year and a half, and we didn't do much on it. In October of last year, we kind of got the mothballs dusted off the project and said, hey, we need to move this forward. It's time to kind of start moving this. Council agreed, they said, go forth. We ended up hiring Woodblock Associates, which is an architectural firm out of Portland, Oregon, to take a look at that building for us and do a scope, a renovation scope, and then ultimately to provide us with a mock bid so that we know what our budget number is really going to be. And so that's what we endeavored to do, and we've been doing over the course of just last year. We've had UDL Engineering, we're doing some survey work. We've had KCL do mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Carl hired Surf Flow to come in and camera the sewer lines to make sure that, moving forward, this building is going to be something that the community can be proud of for another 50 years. I think it's important to note that there's really been no significant investment in this building, really, since it was constructed in the late 20s, I think, is when it was constructed. And then the bathrooms that are currently were added in the mid 60s. So nothing significant's been done like that. And we didn't actually take complete ownership of the building. The school district gave us the building in February of 1981. We were custodians of that building for a very long time, which drew the ire several times of our auditor, saying, why are you spending money on a building you don't even own? And so in 2018, councillor Shepherd, myself, I think it was just the two of us, went to the, yeah, I think we went to the school board. School board at the time was looking at doing some things with their properties, and they were trying to do something with some bonds. We asked them if we could have the building, you know, grant us that we've been taking care of it for 40 years. It's time for us to own this thing. They concurred with that and transferred the ownership to the city in that year. So all that brings us to right now. So now we're to the spot where, hey, Woodblocks finished their scope, of course. The scope's been reviewed by the, another roll ad hoc committee I created to review that. And this, these are the project components that we're wanting to talk to council tonight. In the, in the mock bid that you have. In the, in the, the mock bid that you have, the gymnasium floor is shown as a composite floor. So I did put the composite flooring information in the council agenda packet for council's review. At the time, we weren't overly crazy about this particular flooring surface because it looked rubbery, but they've done a lot in the last few years to where it looks really nice. There are some colors that you can get, and it looks actually like a wood floor, and the longevity is great. One of the other benefits to this gym floor versus a wood floor is there are a few dead spots when you get on the, depending on which way you're going, I call it the right-hand side if I'm going to the west basket, and you get to about the half-court line, and you'll be dribbling along, and the next dribble you take, and the ball stops, and you'll look down and turn the ball over, and get yelled at by the coach, and get set on the bench. So if you put the composite flooring in, that's not going to happen. And, and the kicker is, it's $95,000 cheaper than, than a wood floor. So that's one. Windows alternate, what does that mean? Well, the windows in the, in the, in the base included just the windows for the gymnasium portion of it itself, which makes no sense. If we're going to do HVAC for the whole building, we need to do all the windows. So Carl and I are recommending to include all the windows in the building. In talking with Jared Fogel, the gentleman from Wayland, of course, when they do the flashing and the sashes of that window, they're going to have to cut out around the window. So that's going to look ridiculous. So as the backside of the building's already starting to look rough, we painted it about 12 years ago. So I asked them to include an alternative for painting the building, you know, as the final thing, once they get the renovations done. So that was added to this. The seismic alternates, basically, there's about $34,000 to $38,000 that we're recommending that council go ahead and do, or put a part of this, this bid document. Basically, what that'll do is, it'll keep the building safe in the midst of a seismic event. Folks can get out safely, but to use the building, we would have to have a structural engineer come in and assess the building. So that's the level that would get us to. To go all the way would be another $600,000 or more, because it would be doing all the plywood and all the siding. So anyway, so we feel that that's a happy medium in terms of the compromise. The last thing that I wanted to talk about on the project components piece was the kitchen alternate. So councillor Chambers actually represented council on that particular committee. Carl was on that committee, Elizabeth was on that committee, Randy Simon, Katie Cali, Randy Simon from the park board, Katie Cali from the rec center was on that. One alternate that was decided that we would look at was a commercial kitchen versus a catering kitchen. So what we had included in the base bid was a catering kitchen. Catering kitchen will do everything that's already done there, right? Folks will be able to bring in crock pots, there'll be a toaster oven, there'll be a hot dog machine, a popcorn machine, microwave, you know, of course, a freezer and a refrigerator and those things. And then folks will have plenty of couch space for their sheet cake out, do whatever they're going to do in the rec center. The commercial kitchen, of course, is a totally different kind of kitchen. That kitchen, the alternate, was $150,000 plus $100,000 in, well, $140,000 additionally in electrical, which would be required. Carl and I are not recommending a commercial kitchen. We feel that catering kitchen is sufficient for the use of that particular space. So that is what we are asking council to consider moving forward with in terms of bids. That price tag is just over one and a half million dollars. That's based on figures where, you know, we don't know. We know that inflation's going up a lot right now. We know that there's also supply chain issues. So to that end, scheduling, number three there that I have, is the reason why I'm speaking with some urgency is I think it would be prudent of council to move to a mid-November bidding, where we'd go out for official bids in about mid-November, so that we could get another contract by, by early December, so that the contractor who is actually going to perform the work has enough lead time to get all the project components on site, so that we're not waiting for who knows what to finish the project. Because we really want to stick at, at, really strict, adhere, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, adhere strictly. I get my head right here. We need to adhere strictly to the construction schedule. We'd like to see that start in June of 2023, and we'd like it to be a 17-week schedule so that we don't, you know, we can have everything ready to go for ball and fall season. So when they're playing baseball and softball, we're renovating the gym and ready to move forward. The other thing I would like to say about that is, you know, council could consider, you know, doing some, doing some funding options. I think it would be also prudent to suggest, you know, some ideas around that. I have a few ideas about that, so that folks who might have the means to help donate toward the rec center would be able to do that and be encouraged to do so. So, anyway, there's some ideas there. So that's as succinct as I can make it, and we're, basically what I'm looking for tonight is to see if there are any questions, and what council's comfort level is moving forward with this project so that we can start, because if, if in fact we want to get this out by early November, we need to, we need to move.
So what do y'all say?
I say we move forward on the project with the alternates that Scott had mentioned with all the bills, and move forward so we can get this out for bidding. I suppose you can take it as a motion. Yes, that's a motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I would say no.
Motion been made in second to proceed with this as proposed by staff.
Let's hear it.
To prepare the rec center. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Opposed? None, motion carries.
Oh, that feels good.
Good. We've only talked about this forever.
Forever, yeah.
Some time to do it. Okay, we'll move on to the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Policy ballot. So what, Scott, you want to talk about this?
I do. Every year, every year, the, the League of Oregon Cities provides us with what they're going to move on in terms of their legislative agenda for any upcoming session that the state legislature has. They have done that. I can't remember exactly what page it's found, but page 110.
Yeah, page 110. To 126.
So typically, what happens is council says, yeah, okay, whatever, go forth, pick the ones you think. So I bring this every time and say, let me know which ones you want, or, you know, as Don says, what's your pleasure? How would you like to proceed with this? We get, we get five votes. We can vote for five of the issues that are contained in this report.
Separately or altogether?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the ones that I, I'll just say the ones I articulated were the five, you know, I, again, it's going to be, the, the problem with doing it this way is, again, the bigger cities end up dictating the legislative agenda that the League of Cities far worse. Been an issue for a while now. So the five that I think are, I mean, there's, there's many, let, let's be clear, there are many. But the five I think is, number one would be, and these really are not necessary in any particular order, economic development incentives would be important for communities to continue to have. What does that mean? That means enterprise zones, able to retain and attract our businesses. The state has taken a very aggressive stance on climate change policy, and that's going to make it more important than ever for the state to have economic incentives to keep certain companies in Oregon and to, and to possibly attract some too. I know that it's been widely reported that Intel has purchased a large piece of property in Licking County, Ohio, and we'll see what the outcome of that is. Don't know. So I think, you know, maybe having the league focus on that would be important. Number two is addressing measure 110. Measure 110 was the measure that came into play that legalized illegal drugs and has caused havoc with some law enforcement issues. Our Lynn County District Attorney, Doug Martini, is saying, hey, man, this is an issue that we all want to make sure we, we keep our eye on. I was surprised that it raised, it raised the ire of the league that they're actually looking at it, so that would be one I would consider. Three, cybersecurity and privacy, for obvious reasons. I talked about that earlier. Really, what I hope the state will do there is, again, consider some kind of partnership with the federal government so that then we can, we can create some kind of infrastructure that keeps our public infrastructure, whether it be water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plants, transit systems, you name it, safe, electrical grid, and all, all the above, from cyber attacks. The other thing that the, the state legislature looks like there's talking about is eroding cities attorney-client privilege. They've already eroded executive sessions so far in this state that it's very difficult for the council to discuss anything. It's, everything's so very specific, and now this is another, another enrichment, quite frankly, on council's authority. So I think making sure that the city's attorney-client privilege is protected is important. How can you defend yourself in a lawsuit, whether it's frivolous or not, if you don't have attorney-client privilege? I mean, it's, it's ludicrous to try to consider, in my opinion. Five, funding for recovery of abandoned RVs. Of course, the state has developed many policies and environmental policies that make getting rid of old RVs almost impossible. They've let folks park these RVs on public places, on private places, you name it, and then folks abandon these RVs, and to dispose of one of these things is about 30 grand. While it hasn't touched Brownsville yet, I think you're going to see communities like Corvallis, and Eugene, and Bend, and for certain, anything bigger than those communities dramatically impacted over the next few years. It's already happening when you're talking about code enforcement, because cities, cities don't have the money to do it. So basically, what the league is advocating for is, hey, we're going to go out there and try to get some kind of, you know, this is basically an unfunded mandate on cities, so we're going to try to advocate for at least some funding to help with these RVs. So those are five. Six, pie in the sky, but property tax reform. Nobody trusts anybody well enough to do anything with property tax reform, but, you know, that would be one that would be good. And then, you know, so anyway, those are, those are some of the ones that I highlighted that I think are realistic goals, whether or not they'll raise to the level, it's, it's hard to say, but that's what I was going to present.
What if we decide to do nothing?
Well, then you give everybody else a voice, and you don't, you don't take your voice, which, I mean, it's certainly.
What if we decide to protest?
Well, if you, if you protest, that's good. I mean, you know, if you advocate for things, that's better. If you get involved on a committee, that's better yet. But I think it's, I think it's in the best interest of the city's always at least put four or five choices together, so.
Well, I have my two.
Okay.
Okay, the address measure 110.
Okay.
That one, and the funding for recovery of abandoned recreational vehicles.
So you're concurring with?
I'm concurring with those two. Yes, yes.
If you could take a moment, I was wondering if you had any thoughts on, in table of contents, it's 5A, protecting public employees and officials. It seems desirable, but not necessarily maybe the, of the highest priority relative to other things, but did you have any thoughts on that?
I had, I had a lot of thoughts on that. I, 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 I mean, to me, it's a bit self-serving. I think the fact that they're finding out that when you put everybody's information online, it's a bad idea, you know? I mean, the, the state legislature overreacted about 12 years ago to something that had happened in Pendleton. Two state legislatures decided to break the law. They were not punished. They end up creating OGEK and making all the volunteer councils do it, and that would be great, but I think that that could be, in my opinion, I think that could be handled more effectively if we worked through our Cog to deal with that issue, but I, to me, it's a really, it's a real, it's a real issue. Especially what, what we're seeing, you know, at the state level and at the federal level, so.
So, so just, just to restate, staff's recommendation on the table of contents would be 4D, 5C, 5D, 8D, and 9D? Did I get six or did I get five? We got, we got, we got five correct. Did I get that right?
I did.
One, two, three, four, five, yeah. Anybody have any disagreements with those recommendations or thoughts?
No.
I'll make the motion to approve it as staff's priorities. Five issues. Okay, motion been made to approve these five items to the elements.
Second.
The League of Oregon Cities. There's been a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I was going to say something later in council comments, Assistant Morrow, and to council, legislature Thompson, myself attended the LOC regional meeting a couple of months ago, and we were going to say something last time, but we got to the end of the evening. And I, I just, I guess, I just want to express some frustration. Basically, I was extremely disturbed at that meeting. We had the LOC lobbyist there, and he talked about a number of the bills that, that were, that were pending, and, and LLC's position on them, and, and virtually every one of them, and, and to quote him, the LOC lobbyist, he said, this is all good stuff, Oregon needs to catch up. And virtually every one of the bills that the LOC was supporting was either an expansion of the bureaucracy or an increase in taxation. And, and so when I went through this, it was hard pressed to find pretty much anything that would support, but anyway, so I'm just, I'm just kind of expressing some frustration since we're talking about this particular topic, so.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I do think it's important sometime in the next seven months after the mayor is gone, this mayor is gone, that you might consider requesting that this organization start considering the needs of small cities.
Yeah.
Rather than the huge cities.
Yeah.
Which they're making all their decisions at the moment. We cannot afford to do what Portland, Eugene, Salem, and all those other communities are, can afford to do. We cannot afford what they're demanding.
Well, I think that's one reason we need to join together, so we can advocate together and, so.
So future tip.
Yeah, good, good point.
Okay, we'll move on to the annual project outlook checklist review.
Yeah, it's about 8:30. Everybody had an opportunity to look at that, so the, the project outlook is something that I put together every year. It's based on the budget, and it's our project priorities throughout the year. We did pretty good. Of course, we had a lot of things that, always, as always, that came up that we had no idea of knowing what was going to pigeonhole us or, or do, but we've done well on the budget. We've got several key goal elements moved forward on very well. I think we moved the needle on everything council wanted to do over the last few years, and soon I will put together the new one. So perhaps in July, when we have a little bit more time, I'll, I'll recap that there.
So we'll be talking about this in the future.
Sure.
Okay, ROI grant dispersment reception to date.
So resolution 2207, basically called out that the city received a rural opportunities initiative grant as part of the real, the rural economic alliance, which was what Nate Conroy was talking about earlier. We've been working on a major website and some marketing for that. We're bringing that into completion, and that grant, we still have some money left on that. Councillor Humphries asked me today if we received the second part of that. We haven't yet, but we're nearing the end of the original agreement with J-Ray. J-Ray was the branding company that we got, and we're excited to get that website out there. What will it do? It's going to dovetail with what Nate's doing, it's going to dovetail with what everybody's doing in the valley, which is if somebody, whether it's an existing business, let's say Randy needs a new oven, or, you know, Armando's needs new kitchen equipment, or needs a business loan for a roof, or whatever the situation is, they're going to have a one-stop shop to the Biz Oregon through that site that's going to help them do that. The other thing it's going to help us do is if folks are looking, again, if they're looking for somewhere to locate, or they're needing a place, that's going to be a major tool in helping us do that. As I mentioned in, I think, March, one of the things that's happened as time has gone on here in Oregon, you know, as the lumber industry faded in Oregon, there really wasn't a robust push for what was next. And I think that Oregon State University and the University of Oregon and LBCC, really, all three of those institutions, the two Pac-12 schools for sure, have become research centers, and they put out some top-quality products there, and they have some people who are brilliant. And unfortunately for the state of Oregon, these folks are opening their businesses in Nebraska, and South Carolina, and Maine, they're not, they're not staying in Oregon. So this, this effort that we've been doing with the eight, now nine cities, is an effort to collect that talent and to get them in our area so that they can create jobs for our citizens and benefit our state. So, you know, this is a foundational block for that. So, anyway, that's me talking about ROI.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the May financials. Do you have any questions about those? Which I always say, please forget that. Then we'll move on to citizens' questions or comments. Anybody who wishes to speak? Anybody who wishes to speak to the council, there's the podium. Please present yourself, name, address, and your comments. Three minutes. Anybody who wants to speak to us? Nobody's moving. I assume nobody wants to speak to us. Okay, any questions or comments from the council?
Well, I, I have, I guess, something that I want to just mention. With respect to the string of editorials and newspaper articles culminating with the article in the Albany Democrat Herald regarding the relationship with the Times and the Councils, as a general rule, I think it's wisest not to engage in debate on social media in editorial pages of paper. And so I refrain from that typically. I've had a lot of time, like everybody else, to think about this and whatnot. And so I was wondering, Scott, if maybe you could kind of recap for everyone where we landed on the ad hoc committee and then maybe have a thought or two.
Okay, well, I, you know, we, the ad hoc committee did land on a few things. Some shifts from what we, what we have traditionally done. Traditionally, Don Ware and I, Mayor Ware and I, have been the public information officer for the city. And, you know, given the fact of some things in the newspaper that misquotes, things like that, there were some counselors who were excited about that and wanted to make sure that that was remedied. Basically, the ad hoc committee said, hey, counselors, Brownsville City Council, if you see something that is, is misrepresenting what you said, reach out to the paper to, to ask for, to be corrected, which is different. The other thing was if there's a letter to, a letter to the editor or an editorial that a counselor would take exception to, in very rare circumstances, right, very rare circumstances, a counselor may respond. To your point, going back and forth really isn't something that a city council should ever be doing in that, in that vein. So one thing that I have talked to several of you about is a return to, because we, when, when, when Councilor Craven, when you passed the motion last time, you said something about guidelines, you know, let's, let's get a guideline framework. So what I would like to suggest at the Council of, Councilor Thompson and Councilor Humphries, would be to return to what I used to do for a number of years. I had a very good relationship with Weldon Gregg, who was at KGal, with Alex Ball from the Democrat Herald. I know Penny Rosenberg from the Editor-in-Chief is here tonight from the Democrat Herald as STA Parish, of course. We've always had a very fantastic relationship with both of those two organizations. And what I used to do after the council meeting is I would give a little oral spiel on my phone. I had a little recorder, and then I'd send them that audio clip, and then they could take it or leave it or whatever. And I know Weldon used to put that on, in the morning on KGal. He used to run that little clip because I'd keep it to like, you know, a minute. Or he would edit it out to where I would give enough pause where he could edit out what he wanted to take from that. So I think to, as a return to kind of what we normally do, what I would like to do and what I'm going to do, Councilor Hanson, is I'm going to go ahead and do a quick write-up instead of an oral report. I'll do a quick write-up of the council meeting. I'll put it on, I'll make it on the city's website. I will, here we go. I will make a, I'll just jump on the website real quick. I'm going to make a link to the city's website. Okay. Yeah, okay, you gotta do that. That's nice. That's great. Love you. It's right here. Yeah, it's right here. So on the city's website under maybe how do I or, yeah, it'll probably be, oh, no, it'll be what's happening. Like right here under what's happening, I'll, I'll create one of the, okay. Right here, I'll create press releases down here at the bottom or something. And then I'll do a series of, every time we have a council meeting, I'll go ahead and write something up by Friday that'll be there for anyone to use if they should, should choose. It's not that we're not inviting anyone. It's just that that'll be a place where folks can go. They can get, I'll put the council report, the recommendations, everything is already on the city website for like the Rec Center project as an example.
Will that be shareable?
Yep, it'll all be on there. It'll be like this. It'll be like, you know, you'll get on there and you'll, for example, let's go to council right now. So tonight, as an example, right, here's the council meeting, right? Down here are those things that were in the budget that were online, right? So I, if I would, we, we, council agreed many years ago that they didn't want to see 250-page packets. This one was 126 pages. Had I included all of those things, it would have been a 200-page packet. So yes, all of this is shareable. If you click these links, for example, here's the city budget. If you click this link, you have the entire city budget. It's right there, right? And it's in a couple of places. But what I'll do is I'll dial in a few things so that when you get to, you'll have a hot link. So when you come up here and you go to, for example, here you go, local utilities. So these are PDF forms, right? So that's the water and sewer application for utility services. So this is what this will look like. This will say press releases up here, and then it'll have the council minute blurbs that I'll do, and then it'll have some of the hot topics that we have, right? Or, or things that council wants me to write about. Does that make sense? And then that way, it's all there, you know, just the facts, man, nothing but the facts of the old book movie goes, right? And, and then I can also share that on Facebook.
Yeah, that would be great.
Any questions?
No.
Sounds like, sounds like quite the showtime.
So. Well, I, I just wanted, just a concluding comment, maybe. Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
And I would just, to some degree, restate what I said last meeting and interrupting this meeting.
I'm sorry. No, I was, well, did you hear it?
Yeah, I did.
It was a vibration.
I'm going to shoot that. Going off the law.
I, I would restate the fact that I think all of the counselors understand the difference between editorial comment.
Yes.
And reporting. And I would restate again that this was never about the council, the councils or any individual counselors intent to infringe upon the freedom of the press or the First Amendment or, or anything like that. I think virtually all the counselors here, myself certainly, I hope would be a staunch defender of, of all, all the civil liberties that are enumerated in the Constitution and especially that one. So that was a, that was a misconception, I'll say.
Yes.
Any other discussion from, thanks for clearing that up, Dave.
Yes.
So ready for me to adjourn the meeting? All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Means adjourn. Thank you all for coming.